I was reminded just before we broke that I should have tendered those three documents that I took from Stillapsley too. There was the Hazelwood Mine overview map, which I think would be exited too. And there were the two situation reports from the State Control Centre for the 11th and 12th of February consecutive day.
Yes, my pleasure. Commissioner, my name's Reid and I appear on behalf of G D S Sewers. And I have some questions for you principally about events on that weekend of the 8th and the 9th of February. If I could first establish the proposition that you're aware that C F A has a statutory responsibility for the prevention and suppression of fires in the country area of Victoria, which includes the electricity generating authorities such as Hazelwood. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Are you aware in the emergency response plan of the Hazelwood Mine, there is quite detailed provisions for interaction with the C F A?
I'm aware of it, but not in the prescription of the detail of that plan.
And you're aware that C F A and the Hazelwood Mine have joint exercises for the purpose of preparing for emergencies and in particular fires?
Yes, I am.
I do want to put to you something of the chronology from the fires, from the mine's perspective of the fire which occurred on the 9th. And ultimately, I'm wanting to ask you some questions about how the decisions that were made to apply the resources, stretches they were, led effectively to the Hazelwood Mine getting no support during the course of the 9th from the C F A. If I could suggest to you that we know that at some time in the middle of the day, the Hazelwood Fire, which had been contained overnight, broke away. The Hurns Oak, sorry, Hurns Oak Fire, I'm sorry, broke away. It broke its containment lines.
Yes.
In your statement, you suggest that's at about 1:15 P M.
Yes.
Now, at that point in time, do we actually know what resources had been deployed for the purposes of ensuring that that didn't occur?
I don't, but later in the week, the inter controller of the day will appear.
Yes.
As far as the tactical side of that, that's not my oversight. I understand the strategic part, but not the actual resources by minutes by, 30 minutes by hour.
No. So, neither do you know how it was reported that the fire had broken its containment lines?
No.
Okay. Your statement of it occurring at 1:15 P M is on basis of some information you have received?
Yes.
Okay. Now, somewhere between 2:00 and 2:10 P M, there is a fire spotting on the southern batters of the mine. You're aware of where I'm referring to when I refer to the southern batters?
Yes, I do understand the southern batters.
Yeah. And that was, it appears, the first observation of a fire which it's thought had come from an ember from the Hurns Oak Fire. I think you're comfortable with the idea that could, perfectly consistent with the circumstances on the day that an ember could have started that fire from the Hurns Oak Fire?
I am. The timing, I'm not aware of. The first in my statement I talk about is 14:30. Obviously, that period before 14:30 could be correct and obviously others would know and present that evidence.
I think 14:30 might be by the time when the C F A's become aware of it. Now, at 2:20 P M, there's a second fire breaks out in the overburden dump, which is on the floor of the mine. You're aware of the fact that there was a fire that broke out on the floor of the mine?
I was aware there was fires in the batters and the floor as a result of what was described to me as spotting activity.
Yes. And at the same time, at 2:20 P M, only a little more than an hour, when it appears that the Hurns Oak Fire has broken its containment lines, there's also a fire spotted on the northern batters?
Yes.
And you're aware that each of these fires ultimately become substantial fires and really are the main part of the fires which exist for the balance of the 30 or 40 days?
I would presume that unless they were extinguished prior to.
All right. Now, by 2:50, they observed that there's ash falling from the, what they call the yinner side of the location, which is coming from Drift Field. So it's now 10:03, three fires have broken out. And of course, you're aware that by that stage, the Drift Field Fire had broken out.
Yes.
The Drift Field Fire broke out in a direction broadly southwest of the mine?
That's correct.
And at that stage, whether by bad luck or bad intentions, at that stage, that's precisely the direction that the wind was blowing the Drift Field Fire. That is, they were blowing at that stage in a north easterly direction straight towards the mine?
Yes.
And that's a mine where there's some suggestion that may have been deliberately lit?
Yes, that's correct.
And your understanding is also that it may have been that the Hurns Oak Fire was, could have been deliberately lit, that hasn't been excluded as yet?
It hasn't been included, but obviously investigations will take us there.
Yes. So at 2:50, they're noticing embers coming across from Drift Field, which is consistent with your earlier evidence that you thought that the Drift Field Fire was quite capable of effectively being the source of ember's ember attack into the mine?
That's correct.
Now, at 4:45, nearly two hours later, the Hurns Oak Fire has reached the northern portion of the mine licence area, but I'm talking outside the perimeter of the open cut, if I can refer to the open cut. You're aware, are you not, that there was, the front of the fire did reach the northern perimeter above the open cut?
Yes, I am.
That's at 4:45, thereabouts. These times are at best approximation, of course. And at that point in time, they provided direct attack on what's referred to as M W N, the N standing for northern, it's the power station on the northern side of the mine, substation on the northern side of the mine.
When you say they, I don't understand who they are.
I'm sorry. Are you aware that M W N, sorry, they being, in fact, the C F A were involved in that? Was the first C F A involvement, together with the firefighting team from the mine?
I was aware, not in detail and not by exact location, but I was aware that there were joint operations and there was communication between fire crews and mine workers.
Can I suggest to you that that wasn't as a result, I'll withdraw that as a suggestion. You're unaware whether that was as a result of the strike team from the C F A being sent there to assist the mine, or whether they were just following the front of the fires best they could at that time?
I'd be unaware of exactly that. That's a tactical thing of whether they stumbled or were directed there. The fact they would have been working fairly hard, because it was a very difficult firefight at that point in that area.
Plainly. They were successful in protecting the substation, but you're aware that that part of the fire ultimately damaged some S P Ausnet facilities which supplied a main line of power, one of the main lines of power into the mine. Were you aware of that?
Yes, and I was aware of infrastructure. I was unaware that exactly what it did as far as the line went into the mine, but I was aware that there was impact on the infrastructure.
Okay. You're also aware that that strike team had to be diverted away from protecting mine assets, presumably because of the threat to the township and moor?
Yes, I am aware of that.
And at 4:30, after observation of further embers coming from the direction of the Drift Field Fire, there were, there was a spot fire on the operating face of the mine, which is in the west field. You understand what I'm referring to as the operating face of the mine in the west field?
I do understand that, but I was not aware of a fire that was in the operating part of the mine.
Yes. That operating fire, I'll suggest to you, was in fact able to be contained and then put out by the firefighting team within the mine.
Yes.
But plainly, again, was another matter which required the attention of the mine firefighting team and other employees. But you weren't made aware of the ember attack from the Drift Field Fire on the operating face of the mine?
It's obvious that ember attack would be on the working part of the mine, in the sense that if it's going to make a pass there, there's obviously a probability it will drop in. What I wasn't aware of, that there was a fire that was extinguished in the working part of the mine.
Okay. You were aware that the C F A were operating on the Drift Field Fire?
Yes.
And those operations were conducted on the western side of the river?
Yes.
The river diversion, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Were you aware that there were a number of the mine employees on the mine side, the eastern side of the river, attempting to protect the fire spotting over the river in the perimeter of, in the mine licence area above the open cut? Were you aware of that?
No, it wasn't, but you'd expect in logic that that would be one of the strategies they would deploy.
Their evidence is that at that point in time, there was a deep concern by those employees that the Drift Field Fire, if it got over the river, would move into the mine and possibly completely destroy the mine.
I think that's a reasonable assumption.
Justifiable concern at the time. But it was a further distraction, if I can put it that way, now it's not appropriate, but a further task that had to be undertaken in this afternoon.
Yes.
And plainly, the impact of the second fire in precisely the wrong position at the wrong time, from a firefighting point of view, is a worst case scenario event, isn't it?
Certainly. It's not a desirable fire in any sense, due to the conditions, the fuels, but most particularly the location as you've described.
The location being immediately downwind and therefore the wind was pushing it directly towards the mine.
Yes.
Now, then at about 5:30, there is a grass fire on the eastern batters, which is over near Energy Bricks.
Yes.
You are aware of that fire?
Yes.
And at about 6:45, it appears some C F A tankers arrive to assist the mine staff in fighting that fire. You're aware of that?
I am, probably not at the exact time as you've described, but I was aware that a strike team was in Energy Bricks.
And did provide some assistance in that area, which again is above the open cut?
Yes.
And that particular fire ultimately burnt out, I think the conveyor that conveys the coal from the mine through to Energy Bricks?
Yes.
You're aware of that damage to infrastructure?
Yes.
And then, I think your statement suggests that the C F A arrive at the mine to take control at about 10:00 P M. That's your information?
That's correct. That's when the formal C F A officer spoke to the mine's management.
Yeah, but also, isn't it fair to say that that's the first time that the C F A was able to start to lend any assistance at all with respect to the fires which had started within the mine and ultimately became the Hazelwood Fires?
Yes, however, as I indicated this morning, I'm unclear of the actions between the mid-afternoon and that period of whether there were other resources in and around the mine and how and which they do, which is obviously a question that we're asked to provide further follow-up information about.
Yes. That's why I'm putting these facts to you, suggest to you the extent to which there was assistance from the C F A. And something else to add to it, I'll put to you that there was no intervention by the C F A up until that time, quite late in the evening, on Sunday the 9th of February, by the C F A, although there was some incidental, I always say incidental, there was an occasional dropping of water by aerial support. Apparently, the evidence is in, by aerial support giving support to the front from the, from the fire that was coming threatening Moorwell.
Yes.
Were you aware of that?
I am, and it's also important to understand that the control priorities principally put in place is primacy of life is number one and inter controllers would have needed to build that into their strategy, the primacy of life. And when we've got a fire that's moving very fast, very intense in the areas, that certainly the moor community would have certainly been at the front and forefront of their strategy, particularly in that afternoon. And I think that's what I'm truly, will come out in inter controller statements in regards to the deployment of aircraft and resources.
Yeah, and it's by reason of that priority that effectively you had to leave the mine to fend for itself, at least until late on Sunday night?
When you say leave the mine, I'm not aware of the resources that were in the mine to leave the mine.
I'm sorry.
So I suppose that's what I'm saying, there's a gap in my knowledge to understand when you say leave the mine?
I didn't mean it that way. It's a poor question, I might ask it again. Except in the manner in which I've indicated, which I can indicate again for you, that there was some support on the northern side, outside the open cut.
Yes.
If one likes from the northern side of the moor township, for a period during which the C F A were able to assist the mine staff in fighting the Hurns Oak Fire?
Yes.
As it threatened electric installations and the open cut itself, one. Two, there was assistance for a limited period of time on the eastern portion of the mine licence area, again, above the open cut. And both of those occasions, the C F A strike teams had to be redeployed away from the mine fire, by reason of the priority you've identified, together with some assistance on the other side of the river, the Drift Field Fire. Other than that, the C F A were unable to provide effective support for the Hazelwood Mine during the fire attack on the 9th, until late in the evening.
And like I said, to my knowledge, that's not comprehensive, but my understanding, we'd need to get what was the resource allocation in the afternoon and early evening.
Okay. Although, you don't know any other instances than the ones I've mentioned of the C F A providing support to the mine on Sunday the 9th?
That's correct.
And you say, I might say so with respect quite properly, your understanding is that was because the resources required priority to be given to life and property being the moor township?
Certainly, that's correct. It's very much about the primacy of life and second of that is then property, and property in itself could be critical infrastructure, residential property and so on.
Mr Reid, I don't want to interrupt, there is a question of the gates to which the keys were not, and I don't know whether that ties in with what you're saying or not. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about?
I think there's some evidence about, if your team came on the eastern...
I think Mr Stillapsley has referred to, if you like, a problem in not having the keys, because I look back in Moorwell, and I'm not sure, but that may fit in with the W M N.
I think it might be the eastern fire. Are you able to help us with that, Commissioner?
In my statement, and I'll take you to this, at item 94, so page 15, I make reference, and it was questioned about fire service access to the mine through the main gate. And the main gate is obviously the Hazelwood Main Gate, where the administration building is and at the base of the power station. And that the strike teams deployed from Energy Bricks, and you're referring to them, but I haven't got the exact time here, to the mine we're on scene. And the swipe card to the gate was required to be then forwarded or couriered, transported for the moor fire station, because the moor, all those vehicles did not have the necessary access swipe card. So that was an indicator, and that comes off a radio record that shows when that occurred.
And that may have caused some delay, it looks like, to the assistance in fighting the fire on the eastern batters and the Energy Bricks?
And it goes on to talk about the gates which are on the, I'll say on the northern, the north eastern side of the mine. And it's in a miner's way, and if you look at a map miner's way, it comes to be that very north eastern corner of the mine, and there's some large security gates there as well, which where access was difficult to achieve through fire protection.
If I was to suggest to you that the lack of the access key, because it was held back in Moorwell, didn't substantially delay entry because they cut the fence to get in, would that be consistent with your understanding?
That would be a tactic of a fire service to do so.
Normal procedure, wouldn't it?
Yeah, normal procedure.
Okay. So, in very short summary, that will be the position that the mine found itself in on that day. And you would agree, would you not, that that position is a product of what was extraordinary day, or certainly an extreme fire danger day, and extreme fire danger presented by those two fires?
True, that's correct.
And accepting, asking you to assume for the moment that in broad terms, the level of assistance that the C F A was able to provide is as described, that plainly enough is an unsatisfactory situation for all parties involved to be left with?
It's interesting you'd use the term unsatisfactory, because in the state of Victoria, and I'll take you to your own property or my property, there is no guarantee to have a fire truck at your letterbox or my letterbox on a day of extreme fire day. And I think it comes to how you see the term satisfactory in the sense of the mine. The mine have their resources, are well trained, are well resourced, have ex-C F A fire trucks in their fleet, have capabilities that you've described as being very large tankers, and are an important part of an integrated team. And I suppose, I'd put it back to say that the Sewers fire team is part of the bigger team, and they're not seen as separate in isolation, nor should they be. So in that sense, it's an integrated force that obviously C F A or the fire services would be looking to see that Sewers is able to deploy their fleet, their trained firefighters to deal with it. If there's an unsatisfactory situation, maybe it's the lack of communications between the miners, the mine operations people, and the C F A during a very dynamic afternoon.
I wasn't really putting to anything more than, given these two fires, it would be vastly preferable for there to be sufficient firefighting resources to protect both moor township and the mine.
And I think that's the challenge of the day. The day was, as you've described, an extreme day with extreme fire intensity, with multiple fires and multiple priorities, and obviously the primacy of life priority has won, and we didn't lose life. And I think that's important to put on the table, it was not loss of life, and it was the potential to lose life in the western side of Moorwell.
Absolutely. And your proposition that the mine staff had to take on the responsibility to fight the fire was a responsibility they took on on the day, as you would expect them to?
Absolutely, and I think to what I can understand, they've done extremely well, not only in the deployment of their resources, but the way in which they handled themselves during the day.
Is it also fair to say that in the circumstances, and again, I'm not attributing fault here to the C F A at this point in time, for the reason of them protecting moor township, not challenging that at all, but in the circumstances where the C F A were obliged to give their first priority to the protection of life in the moor township, that, and the circumstances where there was a double fire attack on what is any view most extreme day, it is entirely unsurprising that the mine was unable to extinguish all of the fires from the double-sided ember attack?
I think that's a fair proposition, in the amount of fire that was in the area and the type of windy conditions, and the amount of airborne embers, and therefore spot fire and potential, was very significant.
I think you've already been good enough to say that you've seen enough of the mine to accept that the mine does have a professional approach to fire prevention and suppression, and at least up until the time, state of the art policies for that purpose?
Yes, not only that, I think they take it very seriously, and I think they understand the potential fire in every day of their working life. And they do know, and I know for a fact they do understand what it means to that mine to have fire in it, which is sometimes catastrophic outcomes.
Just so the chain of command is understood, because I'm going to ask you some questions and you may not be able to answer for me, but I think in paragraph 32, you say that you did accept and maintain overall control for the response activities in the state for that weekend?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, in that sense, you were ultimately in charge of the fire effort? And you were aware of the Hurns Oak Fire?
Yes.
It was one of the fires on the radar?
Absolutely.
And one of the fires which had to be considered among all of the fires, and the division of resources as they are available, current location, and all of the other logistical matters, is that correct?
That's correct.
Then on paragraph 35, you talk about the 25 fires listed, and you attach the situation report at 6:00 P M on the Saturday, and the bolstering of aviation resources and the like. Can I ask you this question? Is it your position where you have to make judgments as to where the resources should be placed, taking into account the dangers presented by the particular fires that you're aware of at the time?
That's correct. I think it's a little bit more sophisticated than just judgment.
I'm sure it is, and I wasn't meaning to downplay it, but there is plainly judgment involved, as well as other factors. I'm sure there's plenty of science to it as well. But, and that really goes to the question I wanted to ask, the Hurns Oak Fire, can I suggest to you, presented with some distinct features. Effectively, those features were that it sat northwest of the Hazelwood Mine and the Moorwell Community.
Correct. It also sits...
Pretty close to your lawn, too.
I was going to say.
Yeah. And so, for that reason, it's on any view in a dangerous position, close to a township, an important state infrastructure?
That's correct, not only in a strategic sense. You described before the Drift Field Fire being quite strategically positioned. This has equal importance to the position of it with the wind, the type of wind and fire conditions expected.
And that really is my question, Commissioner, is that you were aware that on the Sunday, north westerly winds were expected?
Yes, that's correct.
And that they had the potential to... And that they had the potential to, uh, take that fire, on a line which would directly threaten, uh, Moorewell Township and the mine, the Hazelwood Mine in particular?
Technically, if it was a northwesterly wind and stayed a northwesterly wind, it wouldn't be a significant issue to Yalorn nor Moorewall. The forecast of weather was for a west, northwesterly wind, um, at one o'clock in the afternoon. That was the maximum temperature, um, the lowest humidity and the wind forecast was showing it was actually northwesterly than northwestern. That actually is a worse scenario because it actually pushes it into the west of Moorewall.
Yes.
So if it's a west, northwesterly, not a, uh, a northwesterly, it's a, it's a more significant wind and the position of the fire and how it travels.
And in fact, you had some modeling undertaken, did you not?
Yes.
With respect to this. I think you would have seen it before, but if I could possibly hand to you, um, we have limited copies of it. I don't know whether the board's got capacity. This is in fact exhibit seven to Mr. Harkins' statement, but I'm assuming at the moment we can't bring that up on the screen.
It's a bit, it's a bit hard because of the facilities we've got.
I understand.
Things upstairs and things in Melbourne, and I think we've just got to do the best we can.
Well, I, I've got a number of copies. You think we do it? Okay.
If you, if you just wait until our technical expert down there and tracks it through the various potential repositories, we may be able to finish up having it on the screen and everyone can know what we're talking about.
We seem to be getting there.
If you're following that, Mr. Redden, we're going in the right direction, are we? I think we are.
I think so.
Stephen, Stephen Harkins.
Yes.
That's the, that's the statement.
It's page forty six.
Probably linked when we get through to it.
Forty six should work as a P D F page number. Yes, it does. Thank you. Commissioner, would you prefer to have a hard copy on this?
Maybe if he has a hard copy.
Oh, one's been handed to him.
I think the rest of us have got the screens, so.
Got the screens and the look, I think. I'm, I'm handing you an email chain, uh, which has two emails or three emails and on Saturday, the eighth of February, originally from Nick Demetrius to Alan Roach and Mark Nash at four twenty nine on Saturday. And that's forwarding on one from I C C Terelden. Um, it says at five twenty four, but we may have a daylight saving glitch there. And then that gets forwarded from Alan Roach at five thirty five, ultimately to Steve Harkins at six forty one P M. Do you have that email in front of you?
Yes, I do.
Yeah. I think you gave some evidence, didn't you, about the Phoenix modeling that was available?
Yes.
And was this, uh, that was made available to I C C or by I C C Terelden?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Do they actually undertake the modeling or was that undertaken somewhere else?
It's undertaken, um, if they've got fire behavior analysis in Gibbsland, it could be done there, but the main work, and in this case it was done in the state control center distributor.
Okay. And, and so this appears was probably sent through at some time like four twenty four and ultimately got through to Steve Harkins at, at six forty one. And it attaches modeling of the fire, um, as predicted for the following day, based on the assumptions that the model has.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
And it's said to be the worst case scenario. But is that consistent with your understanding of the, the way in which the weather conditions were likely to have taken the fire, which was along, you know, south easterly direction for a time and then with a change of wind would move along as it's shown the northern edge of the mine and towards Moorewall?
Yeah, my, and, um, this, this may need some technical advice. My observation of this is a little different than you've described. Um, when this was done, the Hearns Oak Fire, the original fire, which I spoke this morning about at a hundred and fifty six hectares, which is in this diagram and you can't see it there, is this end.
Probably see it there.
Where the purple bit is up.
Yes.
In the, uh, in the western end, is the original Hearns Oak Fire that started on the Friday, the seventh.
And the purple bit was the contained section.
Exactly. It's the cooler section of it and it's obviously it's got hotter spots in there by the, the different colors. This scenario shows the escape of the fire coming out in the south eastern corner of the fire, not in the northeastern corner of the fire. So the fire escaped in a different spot. So the scenario here has got it coming out in the south eastern corner of the fire.
That's where you'd expect with a northwesterly wind, wouldn't you?
Uh, well, yes and no. Yeah, yeah. That, that side of the fire, the eastern side of the fire is the important fire side of the fire for the firefighters to actually, um, put good, good lines in because of the pressure of anything either north west or west. The hotspot on the Sunday, the Saturday afternoon was in the very southern part of it. It was in bushland and was very difficult to control. And there was a lot of work put into that to ensure that that was wrapped up. When I say wrapped up, that it would withstand the pressure of a change of wind the following day. So that was Saturday. The fire actually come out in the northeastern corner. And when you see the, the maps, you'll see that it comes out and travels the Princess Freeway and travels along the Princess Freeway.
You, you're talking about this modeling?
This.
Or what actually happened?
The actual. So the model's showing the fire coming out in the southeastern corner, which had true potential, and that was one of the concerns on the Saturday, that if it come out, it was likely to come out in the southeastern corner. That model's showing it. So where the orange bit is, the hotter bit, it comes out and that's using what I said before as the west northwesterly wind, which was in the forecast.
Yes.
So the forecast didn't talk about a northwesterly. It talked about at one o'clock in the afternoon, the hottest, the hottest, um, time, the driest time and the wind would be west, northwest at a wind speed between fifty and seventy kilometers. That was the forecast. So that model is a good planning, a planning model. However, reality is the bottom corner where they modeled off this, held, held, um, the line. It didn't break out down the bottom. It broke out in the northeastern corner where the Princess Highway meets, um, I don't know what the road is, but the road that goes to Yalorn, the Yalorn Road. So I, I think that's important. This is a model to give people a planning heads up of the potential. I think what it shows here though, is that in that, in the pure sense of the model and the behavior analysis would be able to take you through it, is that you've got a fire sitting south of Yalorn, not impacting directly here, but it's a model, so it doesn't show that it could be spotting over the top of this. But definitely Moorewall is a direct hit in this model.
And uncomfortably close to the Hazelwood Mine as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
It leads to this question. If that was the threat on that occasion, was the fact that this fire looked like there was a real threat, who could provide a real threat with the predicted winds to Moorewell and the mine, factors in determining what resources were applied to containing it?
Uh, that's correct. And again, the inter controller's in a better position, but the inter controller's resources on Friday night, Saturday, Saturday night were enhanced. So there was a absolute focus on containment of this fire and to keep it back in behind containment lines.
My question was a different one. In determining the resources that would be applied to this fire, was it taken into account by you that this fire had the, um, potential to provide a real threat to Moorewall and the Hazelwood Mine on the next day, Sunday the ninth?
Yes.
And. Did you have any input into the incident controllers of the application of resources to prioritize the containment of this fire for that reason?
Um, not in a tactical sense, um, but the example was given this morning in evidence where the inter controller on the Saturday afternoon, uh, requested additional aircraft. And although we'd had a previous discussion with the regional controller to say, what you've got is probably sufficient. Once the inter controller requested more, um, we altered the, the state priorities to give them more. There was also, uh, in the, um, in the, the eighth and ninth state strategic plan that was presented this morning as exhibit whatever, uh, it's in my, um, it's in my submission. There was a clear understanding of the movement of fire trucks as in strike teams, uh, bolstering of aircraft and the movement of aircraft across the state that saw additional resources in Gibbsland and in around the Latrobe Valley.
But you don't know how the incident controller applied them and whether he gave the priority to this fire that it might deserve by reason of the threats this fire provided?
Uh, I don't know the tactical stuff, but I know state, myself, the regional controller and the inter controller knew the potential and the priority of, of this fire. It was, it was noted by all of us to be a fire of potential significance.
Given that modeling, are you surprised by, and I'll withdraw that. Um, you would be surprised, wouldn't you, if in fact the relevant incident control and other C F A officials didn't ensure that the mine at least was contacted and told that this fire presented this threat, uh, on the following day?
I, I would have assumed that this, um, what you're presenting was actually, um, emailed or communicated to the Hazelwood Mine.
As you can see, it was done so, but indirectly and after a couple of hours, the, the first contact is to Mr. Dimitri.
Who is the chair of the Central Gibbsland.
That's right.
Central Industries Group.
I'm suggesting to you really that's not, uh, an adequate notification for the mine, is it?
Well, I, I suppose, uh, that could be debated. Uh, I, I'd have to understand before I make that judgment call about what is the network. And I've seen that the operatives through three, through the central, um, Gibbsland to Central Industries Group to be a very close network within the industry. So, uh, and I, without knowing email addresses, I gather, uh, well, I know Mark Nash is Yalorn, Alan Roach is, and Stephen is, are they Hazelwood employees or another mine?
They're, they're Hazelwood employees.
The Hazel.
But not, uh, Mark Nash is not.
Not Mark Nash, but the others are.
The others are.
So I, I would have seen and, and I would have expected that the engagement through Nick, who is a very competent individual, um, in communicating to his constituents as the chair of, uh, C G E, C, um, C G E I G, um, this may be a normal practice. I'm unaware of the normal practice. Um, but face to face engagement is important and engagement across the industry is. And I, I haven't, I haven't got the information to know whether that was done to what extent, except that I, I know that this was communicated to both Yalorn and Hazelwood Mines.
Okay. Can I leave aside the communication question and go back to the fire for a moment? This, this fire presenting this at least dual threat. You say in paragraph seventy seven of your statement, that having reflected on matters, you consider that the, um, response was commensurate with the threat posed by the fire?
Uh, correct.
Now. Uh, your evidence is that in terms of the actual, um, resources applied to the containment in this fire will need to look to other witnesses, correct?
Uh, that's correct. I, I think it's important though, the scenario that they had placed against them and the, and the risk assessment that the southeastern corner was the most highly risky part of this fire being in, in bush. This model was done on that. The fire never come out of the southeastern corner. So that, that has to be seen that they did have resources, uh, and they did deploy the resources to manage the containment line. The fact it come out in the northeastern corner, um, you'll cer- certainly need to, the inter controller or others would be able to better describe that.
We'll be able, we'll have to deal with that because, um, it's not a matter, I gather, you can touch on, but the fact of the matter is, is that this fire broke its containment lines, it appears at about one fifteen and within an hour was spotting fires into the mine. My question is a general one, that doesn't indicate, does it? That there were sufficient resources applied in the circumstances of predictable extreme weather to contain this fire?
Um, the fire stayed contained until it had pressure put on it from significant winds. Now, um, the proposition you put, reasonable proposition, however, the resources they had, I'm not sure any further resources would have changed the outcome.
It was also predictable, wasn't it, that if this fire did break its containment lines, it would present a dual threat to the mine and the Moorewell?
Uh, and, and as we've said before.
Possibly Yalorn. And so there was, because of that conflict, a real risk that the mine would have to be given second priority, let's say.
Um. If you take the, if you take the decision of the inter controller to apply the state control priorities, um, that's yes. Promise of life is paramount.
No, my point's a different one. It would have been predictable that the problem that did occur would occur. If the fire breaks its containment lines, then unless you've got an abundance of resources, they're going to be applied to the Moorewall Township and not to the mine, correct?
If it breaks its, uh, containment lines at the peak time of maximum temperature, maximum wind speed, yes.
Which is exactly what you hope it doesn't do, but what it's most likely to do.
That's correct. And I think the, uh, there's been assessments to say, um, with the containment sitting for greater than twenty four hours at a hundred and fifty six hectares, um, the, the inter controller, the regional controller had communicated the likelihood was low, but if it did, it would be catastrophic if it did break. And that was the fact that they put sufficient work in to establish it. It hadn't moved. It hadn't moved in size or direction for hours. Uh, and the longer that you have a fire not moving, the means that hopefully the cooler, the cooler the fire is. Um, and there you've got a greater level of success. And that's described by the regional controller that he believed likelihood was low, but if it did come out, it would be catastrophic.
Didn't he, uh, assess it only at something like sixty percent of holding it overnight? Is that what your statement said?
Yeah, and that's why they had resources, um, in there and kept, kept the resources in.
All right. So the answer to my question is, is that despite the danger that ultimately arose from the fire, one, you would say one carting for that there was inadequate resources applied to the containment of the fire?
Um. My opinion, I go back, I go back, it's important to see that the resources that were put in over there for a long period of time held it and contained it. It was only when it was, had excessive pressure put on it from wind speeds that were very excessive wind speeds that it came out.
I'm going to move on, Commissioner, but it, it seems that Fri- Sunday the ninth, at about midday, when the temperature got up, was the very time when it was likely that this fire would be, would break its containment lines. Isn't that the case?
And there was additional resources put in there. The two, two additional heli tacks were in, in the valley by, um, lunchtime.
You don't know whether they were even being applied to this fire?
No, we'll, we'll work that, but they were available for, um, deployment to the fire.
Yeah, that would have been at the, at the incident controllers.
Discretion.
And there was this other fire, Jack's River Fire, is it?
Is that correct? That's correct.
And you in your statement say that diverted, um, resources away. The sore point is, Commissioner, is I'm probably asking the wrong person. I mean, you're unable to say whether, uh, these resources that were available, finite as they were, were properly applied and proper consideration was given to the threats by this fire to the township and the mine.
Yeah, when you say finite that they are, the C F A network, depping, uh, resources and additional M F V resources were all in the valley and there were resources throughout Gibbsland that still weren't deployed. So it wasn't as if every fire truck in the, in the Greater Latrobe Valley, in all the Greater Gibbsland area were committed to fires. There was still capability to go on to many other calls, which they did. I think what you've got and the inter controller is the best positioned, is the controller requested and received the resources that they believed necessary. And, uh, they, uh, I think did a fantastic job to control, contain a fire that had potential. And as you've said, overnight it had a sixty percent chance of coming out. It didn't come out overnight. So their success overnight was of significance. And I think it's very important to acknowledge the efforts of our firefighters was something that, uh, that we shouldn't, um, misunderstand because they're very committed to what they do. And they do not, um, they do not take this very lightly to have a suggestion that they are inadequate in what they do, if that's what you're suggesting.
That wasn't what I was suggesting. I was in fact going to suggest you might want to answer my question now that you've finished that. That's all right. My question was, was that really you're not in a position to tell us whether, given the finances that were available, whether sufficient were applied to this fire, given the particular risks it provided?
Correct. The most appropriate person is the intercontroller. However, what the intercontroller requested, he received.
And I was unable to find any reference in any of the reports or minutes to the particular risks which, or particular threats which this fire presented. Able to assist me in that regard?
No, not in the detail. But again, the intercontroller has made comments about the likelihood and consequence of this event. So I think there's been some assessment done, certainly by the intercontroller, either in a verbal tabletop exercise to understand what it is.
Do you say there's something written which indicates that he was aware of the threat by this fire to the morrow township and the mine?
Well, the prediction modelling that he's got is part of that.
This?
Yep.
This is a modelling, but whether or not he applied that in the application of resources, we don't know?
No, you can ask, you can ask him.
We can ask him. From that time, again, we need to direct questions to him about what capacity may have existed to provide some assistance to the mine during the course of the afternoon. You're not in a position.
That's the intercontroller's.
Intercontroller. Okay, now. And again, you're unable to say on the state of his resources, whether it was predictable that the mine would not be able to get any real assistance from the CFA if the township was also threatened?
Best if the intercontroller answers that in the tactical sense. However, I think it's what I mentioned before, that there's no guarantee that you'll have lines of fire trucks to go into any of those areas when you've got fast-running fires in open scapes and also threatening communities.
Lee, let me just ask you this thing. Accepting the primacy of life principle. These mines do provide or present particular problems, don't they, being twofold? One is the critical state infrastructure. In the case of Hazelwood providing something in the order of a quarter of the state's power. And the second feature is, is that they are coal mines and therefore they burn and are extremely volatile in its sense, correct?
Correct.
And so you would agree with this proposition? That the fact that a major fire may cause the CFA not to be able to assist in defending such an important asset is a problem?
You might describe it as a problem, but I'll take you back to what the state control priorities are. First one's primacy of life, and that's any Victorian anywhere. Second one is information to the community. The third one is protection of critical infrastructure, essential infrastructure and community infrastructure. So what you're describing is actually covered clearly in the state control priorities for intercontrollers to deploy. So the third one is that about critical infrastructure, essential infrastructure, and what is community infrastructure? And then the fourth one is actually residential property. So it's interesting that, I don't believe that the proposition you're putting forward is actually sound at all in the sense that we have been very clear in the state control priorities that critical infrastructure, essential infrastructure which is in the valley and is the producer of power for the state is a significant consideration that our controllers consider on a daily basis.
But my question in fact was putting an additional gloss on that again. Given that it's significant infrastructure with the state. But it has a further impact, doesn't it? And that is that this particular piece of infrastructure will burn and burn badly and will impact on, as it did in this case, the morrow township. It's a further factor, isn't it?
It's a further factor, yeah.
I'll reserve some other questions for the incident controller, Commissioner, but I was wondering whether you might be able to help me with a couple of other features on. In terms of communication, there is, the control of this fire was taken over by the CFA in accordance with accordance with proper protocols and procedures.
Correct.
And that control includes communications with respect to the fire.
Correct, yes.
And I think you were talking about it this morning with response to some question about the need for one source and one line of communication.
Yes, that's correct.
And for that purpose, the Hazelwood Mine had to subordinate their position and allow the CFA to conduct the communications with the community.
Yeah, that's what we would do in a normal emergency is look to be the authority. So the authority being the fire service to lead that, and it's also legislative.
Yeah, and it's the proper manner in which to do it, isn't it?
Oh, I think it is, yes.
Yes.
It's sound.
And not only is it sound in your judgement, but also that it's the current method which is in statute required to be employed.
Exactly.
And the fact that the community may get the impression that the Hazelwood Mine is not sending sufficient communications out to them is just an unfortunate by-product of that policy.
I'm unaware whether the community think that or not. I think the fact is that we are very clear in this state that there needs to be an authority. The authority is the fire service and they have got the responsibility for the first time in the last three years to have legislation to do so.
Certainly, whether or not you know of the criticism, you think that any criticism of the mine authorities for not establishing its own line of communication with the community at the same time as the CFA would not be justified?
I think it'd be confusing.
Yes. Just a couple of questions about suggestions by Mr Brown. You're aware Mr Brown had an inspection of the site?
Ah, yes, yes.
And in his statement, he suggested, makes some suggestions. Did he actually communicate to you any recommendations as to things that he thought should be done?
I haven't.
Following the inspection?
No, I haven't seen his witness statement.
I'm sorry, my question's a bad one. At the time, after his inspection, didn't he make any recommendations you're aware of?
I wouldn't call them recommendations. I'd call observations, that his observation from previous that he thought there would be a more extensive network of pipe work and sprinklers particularly in the closed part of the mine, or the worked-out part of the mine. And those discussions that I've had with Mr Brown have not gone to what you would be describing or I would describe as recommendations. I think there's been observations and comments that he's made to me about that.
And that was after his inspection?
Before and after. He's fairly strong in the opinion of what was the ninety-four, ninety-five documents that show types of those reticulated systems as being an appropriate way of protecting the worked and the worked-out area of the mine.
I might take that up with him, but he suggested that he would have used bulldozers to bulldoze clay onto the fire. Is that something you considered?
In his observation, yes, but obviously any solution like that would be a joined-up solution between the intercontroller and the operations manager of a mine, because it's obviously got other consequences apart from just putting the fire out. So that may be made comments by multiple people, but ultimately it was the strategy of extinguishment was developed with the fire services leading and obviously the mines people were contributing to.
And ultimately you considered that strategy to be, as it developed, an effective strategy?
Our extinguishment strategy, yes, yes it was.
He makes comments about helicopters. I think you've already commented today. You think those comments are misconceived, I take it?
I don't know what Mr Brown's comments are, but I'll go back to say that the use of helicopters that have got long strings and buckets on them is a more effective way than using helicopters that fly in and drop loads. So in that sense, if that's what you're referring to, that's consistent with what I said this morning. Different types of helicopters will do a different job.
And the types with the long strings and the.
The buckets.
And the buckets, you say, were able to work very effectively despite the particular nature of these mines?
No, I've got no, I've got no evidence to suggest they weren't. And if there's something comes out of the operational debrief about how they were deployed at certain times, I'd be interested to hear that. But to my observation, the long-string bucket helicopters worked.
Thank you, Commissioner.
The board pleases. Mr Lapsley, what might seem a long time ago, you were asked by our friend Ms Richards about the events on eighth February and the state of fires burning on that date in the context of the state operating brief, tab five to your statement. Do you recall being questioned about that?
I do.
Just so that we can put your answers in context, how many fires were in fact burning statewide on the day, eighth February?
In the twenty-four hour period, in the twenty-four hour period, from the eighth of February to the ninth of February, nine hundred and fifty fires reported.
Over how many?
Nine hundred and fifty fires.
And more locally in the Latrobe Valley, how many fires were ablaze in the same period?
I'd have to read it here and I can't find it, but we had East Gipsland burning of significance with numbers of fires. And I haven't got the exact number here that I can recall.
Are you able to call that number to mind or would you need to look at something? If it's a latter, we can pursue this when you're next before the board.
I'd need to be able to give you the exact number.
You also gave evidence in answer to a question from our friend Ms Richards this morning about the Hearn's Oak Fire being contained on eighth February, but that you had a conversation with representatives of CGEIG about the potential that might present itself thereafter. Do you recall being asked questions along those lines? When you spoke before about the potential, what were you talking about?
The potential of the fire. So the potential of the fire is clear about not only what it will do in a fire behaviour sense, that where it will go and what it will travel, including spotting activity. So the fire potential had the ability to move, move fast, be very intense and impact on, obviously in this case, more and other infrastructure.
What did you tell the members of the CGEIG about this potential?
It wasn't me. It would have been the regional controller that did that.
Presumably he informed you of such conversations? What was the substance as best was reported to you of this discussion?
Not only for the mines, including Yalorn and Hazelwood, but Hancock's plantations. Were also briefed to say that this had the potential to move and have catastrophic impacts on the infrastructure.
Have you heard of a man called Nick Demetrius?
Yes, I do know.
He was the fellow about, I'm sorry, who's mentioned in an email that was Mr Riordan talking to a minute ago. What role does he have in the context of the CGEIG as far as you're aware?
He's the Chair.
So as best your expectations might be, by telling him in his capacity as a member of the CGEIG, what, where would the information go and for whose benefit would that information be given?
Well, I'd expect that he would distribute it to that of the membership of the group itself. And if I'm right by reading that email that was handed up, they are the Yalorn and Hazelwood representatives that was distributed to. And I'm unaware of what conversations he would have, but I would suggest that being the type of person, he is a very collaborative individual, that he would have spoken to those representatives.
And just to remind us of the dates again, that information was given to him on the eighth, is that what?
Yes, and it's late in the afternoon.
Do you know him also in his capacity as a member of the Regional Emergency Management Team?
Yes, he would participate in the Regional Emergency Management Team. And obviously he would have responsibilities to communicate those issues or engage with others as necessary.
And once again, communication to him, you hoped would be communication to which body?
Back through his own, so he works for Law Yang A. So he would communicate back through Law Yang A and then he'd go back through the network of the Central Gipsland Essential Industries Group.
Ultimately reaching which entity relevant to our purposes here?
Hazelwood and Yalorn Power Station.
Thank you. You've described the Hazelwood Panmetre Hearn's Oak Fire as being a complex fire. That's, well, that was the description you gave this morning. What do you mean by a complex fire?
In the sense that a complex fire is, is necess, complex not in a complex of fires, but that it's got plenty of potential and if not managed appropriately, will run and run far. I think the context is a little bit broader though. The fires that were in the valley were a complex group of fires in the sense that they engaged, were positioned in positions that, or locations that put pressure on infrastructure and the town and engage multiple players that actually have firefighting resources. So there is, there is private fire assets in Hancock's, in Yalorn, in Hazelwood, in Law Yang, in APM. So not every part of Victoria has a significant industry capabilities. There adds a level of complexity about how and which it all operates. And all of them have capabilities that contribute to the overall firefighting capability.
In answer to a question from our friend Ms Richards this morning, you mentioned that aircraft were being resourced to deal with the Hearn's Oak Fire. Do you recall giving evidence along those lines? How many aircraft, as best you are aware, were resourced to deal with the situation in the Latrobe Valley by late eighth February, twenty fourteen?
The aircraft in the valley, and there is some information that we hand up as a result of those questions this morning, was nine in Gipsland, was nine helicopters, five fixed-wing bombers were in Gipsland. And again, we need to go to the intercontroller exactly what assets, as in aircraft assets, that Laurie was actually looking after.
Well, again, in the context, you may have already answered this, but in the context of fires across the state of Victoria, these resources were being deployed to the Latrobe Valley, but how many other fires could have benefited from these resources at the time?
Well, in the day, and as I said before, there's nine hundred and fifty fires reported between five o'clock on the eighth and five o'clock on the night. So we know nine hundred and fifty fire reports. All of those were treated by the aircraft or ground resources. And some aircraft do multiple fires as they fly because they get a bird's eye view obviously. So in that, it is interesting though, out of the nine helicopters and the five fixed-wing bombers, so it's fourteen were in Gipsland, out of fifty-four, do you get percentages about where we've got it? There's a reasonable cut of the fleet in Gipsland.
You mentioned in answer to a question from our friend Mr Riordan, the events at ten PM or thereabouts on the ninth of February when CFA became the control agency of the mine. Do you recall giving evidence along those lines? What role did the mine operator have once CFA assumed control?
To work with in an integrated way with CFA. So it's work with and not to drop the ball and think that it's time to go home and back the trucks in the shed. It's actually a joined approach with the industry fire brigades.
What expectations did you have of the mine operator in this case, even though CFA had assumed control at that time on that day?
To remain integrated and continue to man their crew, crew their vehicles and provide the advice, technical advice to the intercontroller.
In addressing the subject of water bombing activities early in the fight, you referred to a machine called Elvis and you were stopped in the answer that you wanted to give. What did you want to tell us?
Well, we haven't got Elvis, but the light machine of Elvis, as everyone sees, the big orange crane, we've got two of them. At one point in time, we looked at deploying that into the Latrobe Valley, Laura's requested of us, and we didn't deploy it. And the reason we didn't deploy it, it's again a weapon in itself as far as the interface of Melbourne and is extremely successful in those tight wooded, interface peri-urban environments. Elvis would not be, in an open grass fire, bush fire environment, would do reasonably well in Gipsland, would not be the type of machine you would fly over the mine to use it as in the downdraft, which is what's been communicated, would be so significant that it would spread, potentially spread fire. So Elvis, or its equivalent, the crane, was not deployed down to Gipsland that day. It stayed in the metropolitan area and was very successful in the metropolitan area.
It was suggested in other questions put to you that there was an inconsistency between the GDF learning and the initial firefighting techniques that you applied. Do you recall being questioned along those lines?
When you say the learning?
Yes.
Take me there. At the aircraft learning?
Yes, in special reference aircraft.
Yeah, yeah. Look, yes, as I've said before, I think it's, the learning is about a, a certain capability of an aircraft. We use a different one these days and therefore the learning, I think, when I, when I see what they've requested the, the, the incident action plan of the 10th was asking for water bombing machines and they would have been looking for the certain ones that were the best operation in the mine environments, which were those helicopters that have got the long string and the buckets.
In answer to another question, you told us that in order to effectively combat the fire in this case, you needed to use a combination of things, foam, aircraft and thermal cameras. Do you recall giving evidence along those lines? When did it become apparent to you that you needed those techniques and when did you in fact apply them?
Water was, water was the weapon for the first number of days without a doubt. And obviously with the fire extension on the 15th, it was obviously that the system of work needed to be supplemented. So the water strategy needed to be supplemented with foam and foam that could be managed in, in height. So with compressed air foam with a special capability, increased thermal cameras, which is consistent with the performance management system we were putting in to make sure we knew where the heat and where the priorities were and where we were successful or not. And then obviously aircraft with the, the, the big bucket of machines that could come in and hover and drop water in a consistent way, not spray water was important.
So when did you achieve all of those three things?
That all kicked off, was talked about on the 14th and a plan was achieved on the Monday. So that will be the 17th moving into the 18th.
You told us earlier that on the 10th of February, you knew that a fire in an open cut mine of this sort would take one or two weeks duration and you were then going to move on to key dates. Do you recall, but you were stopped. What did you want to tell us in the way of key dates?
Well, I think the fire isn't a consistent fire over the 45 days. You've got the first few days where initial attack was deployed, challenged. The weekend of the 14th and 15th was a very challenging period as far as fire extension and what it did over the Morewall community as far as smoke, ash and the production of carbon monoxide. I did mention this morning, the fire on the 25th that come out of the, the open cut and threatened the Hazelwood power station itself. And those three days there, the 25th, 6th and 7th were significant fire weather days across the state. And there were special plans put in place to support the fire operations about that, that scenario. That fire could come out or, or new fires could start around the mine and go into the mine. So we could have the threat of other fires. And then obviously the weekend, the long weekend in March, the 10th of March was a critical period where we took it to under controlled and then 14 days later to save. So there are progressions and the week, starting the 17th, was a significant week for the Morewall community because it was the week where the most smoke in my observations was placed day and night over the town.
Well, just before we move to that point, i- if someone were to suggest that the fire burned for 45 days, do you see it in those terms?
In a simple sense to a community member, they would probably see 45 days.
How do you categorise it?
No, I see that it's got, it's got peaks, peaks in it of what the fire intensity was and the behaviour of the fire. And certainly there was a two week period on, starting the, the weekend, the 14th, 15th, when it moved to be the next two weeks were absolutely critical. And then we saw it drop off and depending on weather conditions, what it did over the next number of weeks after that.
You mentioned that on the 15th and 16th of February, the fire took on a, a different behaviour. Do you recall giving evidence to that effect? What changed and why?
Well, the, the fire intensity increased. Now, fire intensity is driven by available fuel, dryness of fuel and weather conditions. And certainly we saw the weather conditions were conducive to see fire extension. And that happened on, not only the weekend of the 15th, but again on the 25th. So it, it is very, fires are very, especially fires in the landscape, are conducive to the weather conditions around it and the dryness of both day and night. And we had very dry nights on a number of those occasions. So the dryness of the air and the fuels was critical.
With what consequence to your activities?
Well, increases the fire intensity, therefore the job's bigger to do, to deal with.
You mentioned that community tolerance to the fire changed on the second Tuesday, do you recall?
Yes, yeah, I don't.
Yes. Yeah. In what way was it different and, and what information did you give to try and inform the community to better understand what was going on?
As far as the community, in my observation, the community, they, they will present their own frustrations through this process. But it was clear to them that we had communicated that the fire was not going out. And there was an increased level of smoke and, and the irritant of what that smoke meant to them. And obviously those health and wellbeing concerns were coming forward. So the level of anxiety in the community was, I think justified and probably even in some, some respects predictable. The, the strategies to get to letterboxes, to get people on, on trains, to travel the trains and talk to the people, to give them that ability to talk about what this was and what the, what they were experiencing and where would this go was important and that was done multiple ways. There, there certainly was a change of the, the communications and engagement strategy at the incident level. And it actually, we changed the, the team around to the significance where it was then run from regional control and incident control was focused just on managing the incident. So we actually put a team that was quite strategic about how to do that and connect across all the agencies and it was connecting of the agencies to get the trusted network. And I think we went through that this morning to some degree.
You mentioned a, a particular significant event on the 25th. Just remind us what was special on that day?
That was a day of, of significant dry, hot, windy day and the fire actually came out of the mine. It spotted out of the mine into grasslands and ran and put fire all around what is, is the Hazelwood power station itself and burnt some disused conveyor belts and actually it was a significant firefight in its own right. The concern there was, one of the priorities was to make sure the power generation continued to operate the whole time that we're in there. And that had the potential to stop power generation, had the, had the potential to be in the, in the bunker and therefore saw that production of the, of the power station could have ceased as a result of that fire.
Well, this might be to ask the bleeding obvious, but with what consequence if power production comes to a halt?
Well, it's significant. It's significant when Hazelwood produces 25% of the overall power to the state.
And how does that bear upon the state's activities?
Well, it's got consequences that need to be, need to be understood and managed downstream that are quite significant. It also depends on what power supply is on that day, but the fact is losing, to turn off a power generator for, for greater than a, a short outage has downflow consequences that we would suggest would be significant. And that's why in our state control priorities, we've got critical infrastructure, essential infrastructure as the third priority.
Ranking, straight after primacy of life?
Yeah, primacy of life and information to the community and then it's about infrastructure.
You were asked about and told us this morning about the suppression activities and the strategy that you adopted during the course of which you told us of an expert panel being assembled, which you found beneficial. Do you recall telling us evidence along those lines? What did the panel do and what advice was it giving to enable you to better take on this very serious issue that was then emerging?
Well, the panel's construction is important to understand and an engineering person that understands the Hazelwood mine as far as the geotechnical sides of it, both in water and stability. A well-established commissioner of fire in an urban sense, so Fire Rescue New South Wales is the biggest urban fire service in Australia and stacks up in the top 10 in the world in its urban capability and specialist response. And also to pick someone up that has a fire understanding, but from a, from a coal industry, which is Wayne Hartley, the CEO. And also the mines, the mines experts themselves. So in that sense, it was important to bring them in, but it was important to peer review the strategies and show success and offer up different solutions and test what we were saying in a, in an open forum that allowed frank discussions to say what was the successful one.
What was the expert panel telling you about issues associated with water balance in the mine?
It was one of the most significant issues that need to be managed. And most firefighters do not understand how the mine operates as far as pour water in, more water is, is better. Water is the weapon, but put too much in at the wrong time and don't have the, the balance system of pumping water out could be catastrophic in the, in, in compromising the stability of the mine. That was certainly a lesson to all of our people, although some people that know the mine well understood it, but not the, not the criticality of what it was meaning in that fire operation. And when you're dropping millions of litres of water a day into a fire, which was what they were doing, or pumping it in, if it's not managed the other way in an engineering sense, and that's obviously where sewers are experts in and needed the support to do that. But it was also an understanding that sometimes water was being minimised. So some days to get the balance right, you couldn't use full capability water, which means that's why they were using foam and other ways to manage it and thermal cameras to set the priorities of where they would do it.
Expressed in basic terms, what was the consequence of pumping too much water onto a mine fire?
Well, it potentially compromises the stability of the mine.
And what would happen if that happened?
Well, if you get collapsed, you could see firefighters being, or firefighters and mine workers being buried in, in coal, ultimate death, loss of equipment, breaking the infrastructure that's so critical and some of the infrastructure that had been built needed to be protected because it was a different style of infrastructure. So it needed protection for fire. So you actually compromise the whole strategy if it's not done.
What advice was the expert panel giving to you about the use of foam as a successful method of combating the fire?
We used Mark Cummings from Texas, who was well known in, in, and as I call the pioneer of A-class foam utilisation. And it was about the use of it in conjunction with water to reduce not only the heat to allow us to get closer to, but in some days they were using foam to lay over to stop ash being picked up by wind and being put into the southern part of Morewall. So it was, it was not only just about putting a blanket of foam over that allows firefighters to get closer to it to then use water and other methods. It was actually also on some days simply laying foam over to ensure that the impact on the committee was reduced.
As best you can recall, when did you get advice about the desirability of using foam in your fighting strategy of this fire?
It was the weekend of the 14th and 15th that we knew that water was not being successful, that we need to supplement it.
You were asked about the availability of water in the mine so as to prevent re-burning in answer to which you spoke of volume and flow being important. Do you recall?
Yes.
Questions and answers along those lines. Of what relevance is the configuration of water from pipes in the mine to prevent re-burn?
It, it is complex and, and as I said this morning, there's other people that could better speak about the reticulation system.
Well, I'm asking you from your experience as the head fire.
So in that sense, there, there wasn't large amounts of a network of reticulation that allowed sprays to be operating. So it, it had a, I'd call a base level infrastructure of, of pipework that needed to be worked off as far as fire trucks laying hose. But it was also supplemented by the mines to put additional large volume pumps and large diameter pipework through the mine to give the volume and the flow required to be successful. So there was supplementation over days of works that was added to the mine. And obviously the mines engineers knew the best way to do that and to bring the gear in to achieve that.
Well, when you came to the mine, what was that state of configuration of pipework and so on?
There is pipework in there, but it's not the extensive pipework of covering all parts of the batters in the unused or the worked out part of the mine.
Had it been more sophisticated, what do you say about your role in controlling the fire?
Well, the more sophisticated network means you get water onto coal in a quicker way, which would suggest that you've got a better chance of suppression earlier.
You used an expression in answer to a question this morning that I wrote down along these lines. Integrated incident management must be achieved with the industry. Do you recall giving evidence along those lines? What was the state of affairs in terms of integrated incident management and what had industry been involved could better have been achieved?
The opportunity of this is to have an integrated incident management system that the industry is complied to and obligated to be part of. And that's not just Hazelwood, that would be a model that would operate anywhere. The relationship between sewers, workers, the operations people is very good with the fire services. However, it is still a relationship that these two parts working and they come together at a time, predetermined time in these, it was one or two o'clock in the afternoon and talk about their things. I think the opportunity is that it to be an integrated incident management system where they are together and they set the strategies together. That's the opportunity. That's not to say that, that's, that's not a criticism of any of the workers from either fire or the mines now. That's the opportunity that we need to take to improve.
Accepting that primacy of life was your first imperative in approaching this fire. As at 10pm on the 9th of February, where were CFA resources deployed in relation to the mine itself?
That's an incident controller's discussion.
Well, you were given information about that. What were you told?
So the, if you take it through, what I've got is that there was resources went to energy bricks. And energy bricks then, once they left there, they were deployed into the mine and provided overnight support in the mine, particularly dealing with critical infrastructure and protection of critical infrastructure in the mine, that is power, power lines and pumps.
So prior to 10pm on the 9th, how many separate incidents in and around the Hazelwood mine was CFA dealing with?
Well, you've got the fires that you, you've got the Hearn's Oak Fire, you've got the extension of the Hearn's Oak Fire, you've got the fire in and around APM, you've got the fire in, in and around Ylorn Open Cut Hazelwood and Driffield Fire. So there's quite a dynamic, let alone what fire had already entered the town.
In answer to a question from Mr Riordan about the spotting into the mine on the 9th, you said words to the effect that you were not sure any other resources and the direction of them would have changed the position. Do you recall answering along those lines?
I do.
What, what were you conveying by that?
Well, it goes back that the incident controller believed overnight they had a 60% chance of holding the fire and they held it. That means I think they had resources that were able to achieve an outcome in the Hearn's Oak Fire. During the day, they, and as we've discussed, there was resources that needed to be deployed to the Jack River Fire, but there was also additional resources coming to the valley area. So from that, I, I believe they've done a reasonably successful job. However, the pressure of the wind on the eastern side of the fire and ultimately in the north eastern side of the fire come out. Now, that we don't fully understand about how it come out and what exactly was, was it an ember from a tree? How it was, how it was helped to come out, but it came out and was in a terrible position to put pressure on, on the township and the two mines.
Well, just to pursue that, being the most senior fire person in the state, how appropriate do you say was the decision to divert resources to deal with the Jack River incident on 9th February?
That's a decision the incident controller needs to make and we'll, we'll always support the incident controllers in what they do in the prurient that they've got in front of them.
And just remind us what threat was being posed by that Jack River Fire to life in, for example, the araments surrounding areas?
It had, it had that potential and it actually grew to just under 2000 hectares in size in a fairly quick period. And was doing all the things that needed the initial tack to be appropriate, otherwise it would have been such a large fire.
If the board pleases, thank you. Those are the questions and reexamination.
Commissioner, I appreciate you being here all day, so it's probably tiring on you. You mentioned before about the communications by the mine owner and, and whether or not that was appropriate. And I think you mentioned it was legislated that the CFA had to make those appropriate communications. I'll just put to you, that wouldn't prevent them from expressing concern, compassion or empathy to the community?
Oh, no, not at all. I, I think, and I didn't go there, I think we need to be very clear about what is community information and warnings and then what is supplementary information that the shy owners, operators of major things could or should communicate. So I think it's, you're right, it's got the level of authority about warnings and information and there might, might be another, another com strategy that deals with other issues. However, I would go as far as to say that shouldn't be done in isolation, isolation. It should be considered and connected and that's why I say integrated incident management with the mine operators and owners is important of the future.
And also presence at the community engagement meetings?
Yes, I, I think obviously the community are very interested in, in those local leaders. And obviously in the valley, the industry is a very important part of that, of that network, that community.
Mr Lapsley, just to develop that last point that Ms Petering was asking you about. The statutory duty that you were referring to is your duty under section 24 of the Fire Services Commission Act. And that is to issue warnings and provide information to the community in relation to fires in Victoria for the purposes of protecting life and property.
Yes.
So it's a very specific duty with boundaries. That would not prevent GDF sewers in this instance from engaging with the community in which it operates and which it is affecting?
That, that's correct. And also to engage with what is led by the fire services or the emergency services in the engagement. So it, it doesn't necessarily need to be in parallel, it could be joined. Because the, the, the legislation you've described is a very particular piece of legislation that's delegated into the chief officers. And we ensure that that is about information and warnings. But supplementary to that to give other information, detailed information, technical information can be done through a community engagement. Technical information can be done through a community engagement and that community engagement could be aligned with what is already being conducted by the incident controllers.
And you mentioned this morning a state level communications and engagement strategy. Did G D F participate in that?
Not to my knowledge.
Do you know whether they were invited to?
There were certainly discussions with the communication people that were available and willing to participate. But I'm not sure, and I'd have to take advice of the level of formality in that. But there were sewers' people, in particular, their comms people that were available, connected and across the issues. And very complimentary to the mine which was operating. But I'd have to check the formality of that.
Now, I just want to take you back before I release for the moment to a series of questions that Mr. Riordan asked you about the breakout of the Huns Oak Fire on the ninth of February. As I understood your evidence, it was that the scenario that was planned for was that the southeast corner would break out?
That was the most, the assessment that was done, that was the most likely place to see a fire breakout.
And what in fact happened was that there was a breakout on the north eastern corner of the fire. Now, paragraph forty-three of your statement, if we could turn that up please. You list three fires?
Yes.
The Huns Oak Fire, the Huns Oak Extension Fire and the Driffield Strazeki Highway Fire. Now, just to be absolutely clear, police are treating each of those three fires as suspicious, are they not?
I believe that's correct.
Yes. So not only the ignition of the Huns Oak Fire on the seventh, but the breakout on the ninth.
The point of breakout is a point of investigation.
And of course, if that breakout was as a result of arson, no amount of resources could have prevented that.
If there is the intention of the human hand to hold that fire, you're right.
Now, that said, you gave evidence in response to Mr. Riordan that what the incident controller requested, he received. That's not exactly what Mr. Jerome Myers is in his statement. He says that he requested aircraft overnight. And I think you agreed with me this morning that they didn't arrive until about noon.
Yeah, that's a fair comment. I think I look at what he requested and the timing might have been what he wanted, but he ultimately got the resource.
He also says he requested three strike teams and was only allocated two. And that's a decision that's taken at regional level.
Regional level, about resource availability. And as I said, every endeavour will be to give the controllers what they want, when they need it. But obviously, resource management is always an issue.
And timing can be crucial.
Time and space.
Thank you for today, Mr. Lapsley. We'll see you again on Friday. Mr. Rose, we'll take the next please.
Paul William Brown.
Please make your full name.
William Edward Brown.
Please read the Bible and repeat after me. I swear by Almighty God.
I swear by Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give.
That the evidence I shall give.
In this court of inquiry.
In this court of inquiry.
Will be the truth.
Will be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing of the truth.
Mr. Brown, can you confirm for us that your full name is William Brown?
Yes, that's correct.
And Mr. Brown, you have, for the purpose of the inquiry, made a witness statement with a number of attachments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And do you have a copy of your statement in front of you?
I do. I just got to get it out of my bag.
Sure.
I see it.
Okay.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Brown, can I just confirm that's a statement of forty-nine paragraphs? If you turn to the eighth page.
That's correct, yes.
And can you confirm for us, please, Mr. Brown, that that's the statement that you've made in these proceedings?
It, yes, this looks like your statement, I'm lying.
Yep. Now, are there three changes that you would like to make to that statement?
That's correct, yes.
Take you through those. Two of those are minor and one is more substantial. Is that right?
That's correct.
All right, we'll deal with the minor ones. If you look firstly at paragraph four on the first page, the second line, do you see there's a reference to sixteen men in the crew?
Yes, I do.
Would you like to change that sixteen to twenty?
Yes.
Make that change. Then if you turn, please, sir, to page six of the statement.
What numbers?
Seven pages.
I'm sorry. It should be heading my experience with the Hazelwood Mine Fire, paragraph thirty-four, towards the top of the page. At the very bottom of that page, you'll see paragraph thirty-nine.
Yes.
The very last sentence in the last line starts, "He came and met with me." Do you see that?
Yes.
Yep. And then it goes over to the next page, "The next day on Friday, fourteenth of February, twenty fourteen." Yep. That's a reference to a meeting you had with Mr. Lapsley, which I'll ask you about in a moment. And you go on in the statement, "He offered to take me out to the Hazelwood Mine." Do you see that?
Yes, I see that, yes.
And would you like to add the words "for an inspection of the fire"?
For an inspection of the fire.
Yes. The third change that you would like to make, as I understand it, is you would like to replace paragraph forty-one on that same page in its entirety.
That's correct.
Yep. And you have before you a document which you provided to the inquiry this morning, which has a replacement paragraph forty-one.
Yes.
Is that right? Can you just confirm that we're talking about the same document? The new paragraph forty-one that you would like to insert, I won't read it all, but it starts, "When I was taken around the Hazelwood Mine, I noticed numerous spot fires burning in the bottom of the mine and giving off a lot of smoke."
Yes, that's correct.
And is the final sentence in the new section that you'd like to insert, does it read, "Helicopters may be more suitable for coal-level fires, not batter fires?"
Yes, that's true.
And you would like to replace what's in your, if I call it the original statement, paragraph forty-one, with what is on the separate piece of paper that I've handed up to you.
That's true.
With those changes being made, Mr. Brown, are the contents of your statement true and correct?
Yes.
So I tender the statement and perhaps the additional page could form part of the exhibit.
Yes, forget about exhibit four.
Mr. Brown, you have lived in the Latrobe Valley all your life, is it?
Basically, most of my life.
Most of your life. And you, for many years, worked for the S E C.
That's correct.
You started working for them in nineteen sixty-nine, initially as a labourer.
That's correct.
And over the years, you joined the, what was then the Hazelwood Mine Fire Service in the Hazelwood Mine?
Yes, correct.
And ultimately, you found yourself in the position of the head of that service, the fire service officer.
That's correct.
You explain in your statement that the fire service, or rather, there were separate fire services in each of the three mines in Latrobe Valley, the three open cut mines.
They were dedicated fire services, correct.
Yes. And your predecessor as fire service officer in the Hazelwood Mine was a gentleman known as John Lee, named John Lee?
That's correct.
And in turn, his predecessor was Charlie Strong.
That's correct.
And can you tell us briefly, Mr. Brown, the work that was done by the fire services in the mines?
Well, we looked after all the fire protection and fire suppression systems. We looked after a very comprehensive reticulation system which covered the whole mine. There was a lot of work looking after that because, as you can imagine, there was a lot of leaks and you often had to shift those pipes clear with dredger operations. So it did take up a lot of our time, a lot of our work, our groups. Also, we used to look after all the fire protection equipment, such as extinguishers, hoses and so forth. So it was a fairly busy, very busy, also pumping. We had a pumping system that we had to look after, which supplied water back to the mine in those spraying operations and dewatering as well. So it was a fairly busy section.
Now, as I understand your statement, once control of the mine, the Hazelwood Mine, passed from the S E C into private hands in nineteen ninety-four, I'm looking at paragraph seven of your statement, the role you'd had for the previous six years as fire service officer changed to a different role as support services manager?
Yes, changed.
And did fire prevention and suppression still form part of your role?
Yes, it did. It was still the same as it always has been over the last eighty years through the S E C-run mines. No different, but all I had to do now was to carry on other tasks to keep the operations going, mainly the dredger, coal win in the mine.
Right.
So I had two tasks now.
Two jobs in one.
Yeah. And also, the group went up to about thirty personnel.
From the previous number.
Yes.
I see. Now, paragraph fourteen of your statement on the third page, you say that the fire service section worked out of a depot on the northern batters with an office which housed the fire service foreman and office worker who carried out daily administration requirements. He also took fire calls and directed fire service crews to fire incidents. And you go on and say the office had a good view of the mine and its operations. I'll just pause there for a moment. What period are you talking about there? Was that in the nineteen nineties before you retired?
That was in this, that was right through from when I started in probably nineteen sixty-nine. There was always a dedicated office worker situated in the office. His job was to do exactly that, to do the, answer telephones, take fire calls and general administration work. And that went right through to when I retired. I still had a dedicated office worker in the fire service office.
All right. Perhaps we could bring up a map of the mine, if we could, please? And they'll ask you to identify, if you can, for us the location of that office on the northern batters. I think there might be a ruler. There you are.
Oh, okay. On here or up on there?
Perhaps up on the screen so we can see it.
Where we were originally was up on there, around here somewhere.
And at that time, was that the operational part of the mine or a worked out part of the mine?
Still operational.
Yes. So we've heard a number of references, the operational area. And perhaps if you could point that out, the current operational area is the western part of the mine.
Yeah, that's all the new area that has happened since I've been gone.
Yes.
But we were operating this area here.
Yes, I see.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown. Yes, I've been thinking under your foot that we need on top of the microphone. Can you see that? We just need to put that on top of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Now, I want to ask you about a different topic for the moment, that is the auditing of the fire system. If you turn, please, to the fourth page of your statement, paragraph twenty-one, you say that during the period of the S E C, an external auditor, at least external to the mine, would come in, what, on an annual basis and check up on you? Is that the?
Yeah, when you say external, he was actually Dr. Hutchins. He was an employee of the mine, but he'd come from the head office in Melbourne.
Yes.
From the S E C V. Every year he would come up and he would undertake the fire audit. He'd go through the fire instructions, or this is before the fire instructions, but he would go through the mine and make sure that all the pipe work was in position.
Yes.
All the fire breaks had been carried out, everything to do with fire suppression, pumping. What we used to do with our pumps, all our major pumps, we used to try and get a maintenance done on them during the winter months so that all our critical pumps were all available during the summer months. He would check a hole, that sort of thing. And he was a very, very, very tough man. If he didn't fulfill the fire audit, we'd also do a wet test as well. After we'd done all the fire audit, we would then go out and put on the spray. And then you would take a look and see where the coverage was or wasn't and make some comment as to fix up by putting portable sprays in their positions to cover dry areas.
Now, you say in paragraph twenty-two that such audits ceased after privatisation and you don't know whether currently there are external audits along those lines.
No, they ceased after the S E C. I used to carry out the Hazelwood Power one myself in-house. I did it to the fire policy because I was still responsible for it. So it was still carried out as per Dr. Hutchins would have done it.
Yes. What do you say to the inquiry about the value or otherwise of an external audit along those lines?
Well, I believe that even when I was doing it, I didn't think that was probably the right way to do these things. I think there needs to be an independent person that comes in and does do the audit themselves. I don't think it's so right that we do it in-house.
Now, the next topic that you address in your witness statement is the nineteen seventy-seven fire, which we heard a little bit about this morning and its aftermath. You were involved in the suppression of that fire?
Yes.
And as you explain, it was put out with the assistance of two hundred or so men from the local, their then local R A F base in Sale. Coming out of the inquiry into that was a document you referred to as the Bible?
Yes, the Fire Service Policy and Code of Practice.
And you have attached to your statement as an extra W B two, a copy of that Fire Service Policy and Code of Practice that you've kept since the time you finished working at the mine?
That's correct. I think it was last revised by myself in nineteen ninety-five.
You're certainly there as the author on the bottom of the page.
That's not supposed to be there. What happened was I used to give it to the girl in the office too, type it all up and get it all fixed up. And she put my name down as author. I certainly wasn't the author.
And as we understand it, Mr. Brown, that's a code of practice which is a version of this document based on the work that came out of the review of the nineteen seventy-seven fire?
Yes. When they start, after the seventy-seven fires, the S E C in Melbourne started a review of the fire from all the lessons learned from the seventy-seven fire, right through the fires back in from the nineteen forties. And they come up with this policy, all the lessons learned. So they come up with this policy, hopefully to correct all those things and give us the infrastructure to protect the mines in the future. And I believe it still is a very good policy. I used it for all the years I was a fire officer and it served me very well because I never had a lot of major fires. It's not that that couldn't happen, but I believe that if you follow the policy, it'll at least mitigate any fires you hear of.
I want to ask you about one part of it. It's on page thirty-three, oh, thirty-three of your statement. The number's cut off in the top right-hand corner. The bottom page is page twenty of ninety-eight.
Which is the page number?
I'm not in your version.
No.
Do you see the page numbers in the bottom right-hand corner of the document?
I'll pop the attachment, Mr Brown, pop the policy itself.
Oh, I've got it. I've got the first policy, oh, here.
I think there's another one being.
Yeah, yeah, I've got it in there. What was it again, page?
Page, you see page twenty of ninety-eight in the bottom right-hand corner?
Twenty, twenty, twenty. Yes, I've got page twenty.
Do you see a heading three point four, worked out batters?
Yes.
And we've already heard some evidence about batters being a part of the mine that had previously been the operational area.
Yep.
And a batter is essentially a cliff, a coal cliff.
Steep, steep, steep face, yeah.
Yeah, steep face of coal. And worked out batter is one that had previously been mined, no longer operational. The code sets out what are described as minimum requirements for fire protection in worked out batters. Do you see that at three point four?
Yes.
There's a reference to benches and berms, B E R M S. They're parts of the worked out area that are flatter than the rest of the batter. Is that right?
A berm is just, I think it's set there to stabilise the batter. I think it's only a very small, it's not a, just a small face, a small bench, not a big bench, it's just a small bench.
Yes.
It's always taken, and it's there to stabilise the face of the, of the batter. I'm not being a geologist, but I'm pretty sure that's what, what a berm's supposed to be for. And they used to do catch the coal on them, they do, Fred, Fred, just get on.
Are you able to say, Mr Brown, whether the stipulations, what are described as the minimum requirements for fire protection in worked out batters, whether that was done in your time at the S E C V with worked out areas?
Yes, we, we still had pipelines, uh, top and bottom of those batters.
Yes.
Even up till the day, till the day I left, we still had pipelines. Actually, there was, um, there was one pipeline on, I think it was the east side of one level where they decided to rehabilitate or, or take risk management. They took the pipes out, clayed the area, but I wasn't happy with it because I, there was a big steep face on the other side, so I put a pipe back in to protect, to protect the batter. I wasn't happy with it just being left like, left plain.
Final matter I want to ask you about, Mr Brown, is your experience of this year's fire. And you, you talk about that starting at paragraph thirty-four on page six of the statement, the sixth page.
What was the, um?
Paragraph thirty-four, Mr Brown. I'm sorry to be moving you back and forth in the folder.
Have it there, yes.
Yep. You, uh, you say that you're living in Churchill during the course of the fire.
That's correct.
But you have a relative in, in Morewell, is that right?
Yes, just in the street behind, actually.
Yep, behind where we're sitting?
Yes.
All right. And you, like everyone else here, was aware on the night of February that fire had got into the mine?
Yes.
And you say that a couple of days after it started on Tuesday, the eleventh, you made some contact with the operator of the mine. Can you tell the inquiry why you did that?
Uh, I was concerned about the smoke. I, I realised that the mine, well, I thought the mine fire was out of control, so because of the smoke and it was giving off. So I ringed the mine, I think it was a couple of days, as you say, a couple of days later, and I got in touch with the, one of the mine engineers there, mine manager or one of them, I don't know what position he holds, but I asked him did he, he need any help? I was quite willing to come in and offer my assistance, but I was told that everything was under control and it wasn't required.
You weren't happy with that response?
Well, it wasn't that I wasn't unhappy, but I thought that I had something to offer because I'd been in the seventy-seven fires and this, this looked very similar to the seventy-seven fire with the amount of smoke that was given off. And I thought that even, even I could have helped round the big pumping stations which are critical in these, in these big fires. So I wasn't, I wasn't unhappy, but I thought that I could have helped.
And your next step after unsuccessfully trying to get onto the local radio was to contact the A B C in Melbourne, specifically the John Fane program?
Yeah. I was getting a bit worried about the amount of smoke and the smoke that was coming over the town and I had some worries for my nephews and relatives that lived in Morewell. I wasn't sure what the long term effect that this Kyle Nash was going to be on, so I decided to ring John Fane to see if there was something he could do to help us out. And basically he told me that he would get in touch with Commissioner Lapsley and that's where we finished up.
All right. And then on the fourteenth, the Friday of the first week of the fire, you were actually contacted by Mr Lapsley subsequent to being on the phone, oh, on the radio with Mr Fane?
Yes, Mr Commissioner Lapsley had come up and met with me in Morewell and we had a bit of a discussion and I think what come out of it then was he was going to take me around the mine and show me the inspection of the mine.
Yes.
And that happened about a week later, I think.
All right. In your, in your statement, paragraph forty, you say you went on that tour of the mine on Friday the twenty-first of February?
Yes.
So the fire had been burning for just shy of a fortnight at that time?
Yes, it's about a fortnight, yeah.
How long did you spend in the mine?
I spent, I spent in the mine, I didn't go around with Commissioner Lapsley, he was called away to a meeting.
Yes.
And I went around with a senior C F A officer and also an employee of the mine and also the pilot.
Yes.
I spent about twenty-five, thirty minutes in the mine.
Yes.
And as I was, as we were heading down into the mine, I noticed three or four spot fires burning on the eight level. And I mentioned to the, the two, two prickly in the car, C F A and the pilot of the vehicle. And I said, yeah, come on, these fires are still burning. And he said that we didn't have enough people to put them out. And I said, well, it's pretty risky doing that because you could get a change of wind which could blow those fires back into the southern batters and you've got another extension of your fire. And all he said then was, the pilot actually answered and said, well, as I said before, we haven't got enough people to put the fires out.
Now, you, in the new paragraph that you inserted today, you make some references to the use of helicopters. I just want to ask you briefly about that. Firstly, as I understand your evidence, you did see a helicopter being used to drop water on the fire in the mine?
Yeah, on our, on the way, after I'd noticed the spot fires burning in the mine, I was up, we're on our way up to three level on the Northern Batters and I noticed a helicopter dropping water on the higher level.
Yes.
And we, we stopped in at, I think, five level and I noticed, I noticed two C F A units putting a fire out there, but I was a bit surprised that a fire so big, only had two, two units here, but I couldn't explain why that was so. But I did think at the time that the only way to fight these fires is to, plenty of water and plenty of manpower such as we did in nineteen seventy-seven, because I believe that's why the fire burnt so long, because the helicopters might be successful in pushfires and so forth, but I didn't believe that the batter fires suited them and they would be more efficient fighting coal fires on levels, more so than the batters. And I did believe that if they're more successful with manpower, water and the, and the reticulation system, it would have done probably a better job and probably put the fire out a lot quicker.
Can I just ask you, what, from your experience and in your opinion, what's the difference between the use of a helicopter to drop water on a, on a level fire as compared to a batter fire?
Well, the observations I got from the helicopter dropping fire was it was coming down, hitting, hitting the batter and splashing off, there's with a coal fire, it's hit, it's on a level, it's hitting the whole level, it's, it's on a level, not on a, not on a vertical plane.
I see.
I know they had them on the ropes and it was hitting the face, but I still think that they probably were more efficient on a coal level fire than on a batter fire.
I think you probably anticipated my next question. Were you in, in the hearing room when previous witness, Mr Lapsley, was giving evidence about the use of helicopters with low hanging buckets as compared to helicopters with tanks?
Yes, I know it was, yes.
Yeah. Did, did, you heard that evidence, does that change your view about the efficacy or otherwise of using helicopters on batter fires?
Oh, it does to a certain little bit, but I still don't believe that it's, that they're efficient enough as compared to manpower, a good reticulation system. And, and that's, that's my view. With eighty years, the mines have fought fires and I know we've got to change, but if it's necessary, but for eighty years we've been fighting fires like this in the mines and it'd been very successful. The Moore seventy-seven fire we put out in three days, four days to mop up, but that was very successful with the manpower and the reticulation system, even though in the seventy-seven fire it was depleted a little bit due to the, the fitted strike that caused us a bit of problems because we didn't have all our pipes in, in, at that time, but it still had the fire out in three days.
One final matter, Mr Brown, in paragraph forty-three of your statement, you make reference to seeing mine staff frantically building a second pipeline to put out the fire.
Yeah.
We can bring up the map if we have to, but can you tell us where that work was being done?
Down on seven level, as we come into the cut, I can show it.
I think, yeah, there it is.
It's still pretty near there, but I think it's coming down, they're building it down on one of these, one of these levels here, I think. It's, it's, can I come in the front?
I think you can, as long as you can somehow take the microphone with you.
Yeah, there was somewhere down in the middle here, I think they were building it on, on the roadways. It's pretty different to me now, this mine, it's changed a lot, but.
You're, you're pointing to the, how would we describe that? The south, southwest part of the mine? Is it, sorry, southeast part of the mine?
Yeah, it was somewhere down in the middle here anyway and I was building it, yeah, around here somewhere. I kind of, really, this is all new to me, this mine part here, but I'm sure it was standing here somewhere. Up here, yeah.
So you're pointing.
A little bit on there, I think.
Okay, so you're pointing towards the?
Where the, there where the stacker is.
The southwest area, near the working part of the mine, where the stacker is?
Yeah, there somewhere, yeah.
And, sorry, there is just one final matter for completeness. You make reference to a document which was provided to you by the inquiry staff, this is in paragraph forty-five, a G D F Suez document entitled Mine Fire Policy and Code of Practice, May two thousand and thirteen?
Yes, I did read that.
And you've had an opportunity to have a look at that?
Yes, I have.
And what do you say about that document as compared to the document you identified earlier as the Bible?
It's basically exactly the same, it's just a photocopy. I, I didn't see any changes in it at all.
In fairness, there, there would seem to be some changes of the positions of people, but.
Oh, yes, the, um, I think they call them now, different, they've got different names for different people in charge.
But the substance of it, you say, is essentially the same. And you advocate, as I understand your evidence, you advocate that being fully implemented and that there being external audits to ensure that it's fully implemented?
I believe that the Fire Service Policy and Code of Practice must be reinstated if it's not already reinstated, but it must be put back into position. And if that's followed, I believe that you, you won't get a, you're good fires, it's nothing to stop a fire, but it will mitigate the circumstances of the fire and I believe that must come back in. And I also believe that you must have an external order of the Fire Service Policy and Code of Practice and also the mines have a wet test and all, all that sort of thing.
Yes, thank you, Mr Brown. The other questions I have, Mr Brown, members of the board, have any questions before? Please stay there, Mr Brown. There's a few more, please.
Mr Brown, my name is Reason and I appear for G D F Suez.
Yes.
I just have a few questions to ask you. In terms of your statement, I think, do you have it in front of you?
Yes, I do.
And in paragraph seven, you're saying that in nineteen ninety-four, the mine was taken by, taken over by Hazelwood Power? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Was that in fact a state corporation that took place prior to privatisation?
No, I think that was Gen Vic that took over before Hazelwood Power.
Yeah. It was first, wasn't privatised till nineteen ninety-six, was it?
Oh, I, I couldn't argue on that. I always thought it was privatised in nineteen ninety-four because I signed a contract with Hazelwood Power and I thought it was nineteen ninety-four, but my memory might be a little bit.
And Hazelwood Power may not have been G D F, it may well have been a state instrumentality that took it over in preparation for privatisation in nineteen ninety-six. You wouldn't argue with that?
No, I would, I would have, I thought that it was, that's all.
Yeah. And these new policies were brought in by that state instrumentality rather than by the privatised company that took over in nineteen ninety-six?
Well, that's, the, yeah, well, that's, if you say that's what it is, but the Fire Service Policy and Code of Practice from the S E C days, we just followed that straight through, so I always thought that it was still involved.
Yes, and my question was just in relation to this change of the dedicated fire team that you were still employed during that change, weren't you?
Yes.
Now, certainly the fire code of practice, policy and code of practice, that continued on, didn't it?
Yes.
And you produced your one in nineteen ninety-five?
Your one?
You produced the one which has your name on it in nineteen ninety-five?
Every year, every year it was updated.
And you've seen one of the recent ones anyway, if not the current one, and you've identified that those practices and policies are still in place?
Yes, probably, yeah, policy.
And you're pleased about that because you think it's a very good policy?
Yes, I do.
And if you, if in fact the evidence is, is that that policy is still fully implemented, then you'd say that was a good thing?
Yes.
On paragraph nine, you talk about before privatisation, all three mines in the Latrobe Valley had a dedicated fire service. That would be subject to the same exception, wouldn't it? That, that was until nineteen ninety-four when the state government changed it from the S E C V to Hazelwood Power, state-owned instrumentality.
Yes.
Now, in paragraph eleven, you set out a number of features of the firefighting infrastructure which was in place in your time, correct?
Yes.
And you do that in paragraph eleven. In paragraph twelve, paragraph thirteen, you set out all the sorts of features that were present at the time with respect to the water system, which was duplicated, there was in fact replicated.
Yes.
And other features about the rotating sprays and hydrants spread over fifty-five metres and all in accordance with the policy and code of practice. And you'd be, the evidence will be that in fact all of those things are still in place and still rigidly adhered to by the current owner, owner of the mine, and you would say that was a good thing?
Yes.
In fact, these days they, they have a bit more equipment because they've now got these thirty thousand litre tankers that they can put on for firefighting. They didn't have those in your day, did they?
We did have two, two big water tankers, yes. I can't remember what capacity they were, but they were large, large tankers. They had to.
Were the ones in your time three thousand litre, the, the truck, those firefighting?
No, no, they were bigger, they were bigger than that.
Bigger than that, were they?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You don't know whether they were as big as thirty thousand?
No, I, I would have thought they were getting up into that, that area because we did have small tanks that we had that slip on tankers.
On the question of the, the annual audit, you said how you undertook that when it was, when it became your duty in nineteen ninety-four, wasn't it? Until you retired in nineteen ninety-eight? And I take it you did it diligently and made sure that all of the things were attended to?
Yes.
Now, look, I won't take you through this document just to save everybody the time, but this is the two thousand and thirteen audit which will be going into evidence. Does that, the size of that looks something like the size of the audit you undertook?
As per the, as per this policy.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, yes, it's the same.
And so you'd be pleased to hear if the evidence is as it will be that that audit's still undertaken rigorously by the current owner each year?
Yeah, in-house, is it?
Yes.
Well, I'm not happy with that, but.
Well, as long as it's done properly, that's all you'd be concerned about, wouldn't it? Is that right?
Yeah, yes.
Now, one of the things I wanted to ask you about was that you had the experience in the nineteen seventy-seven fire, didn't you?
That's correct.
And your view was that that was only brought under control in a few days and therefore you thought this fire should be too, correct?
Well, if the manpower was there and the reticulation system was in place, I'd say yes, I would have thought it could have, would have been or could have been.
Were you in court when I described to the commissioner the nature of the ember attacks and the number of fires that started on the ninth of February two thousand and fourteen?
Yes, I did, I believe I did hear some of that.
In nineteen seventy-seven, I think it was, it was one fire started from the exhaust from a vehicle, is that correct?
That's correct.
You'd agree, a very different proposition to what they faced with these two bushfires last February.
Yes, it's a different scenario, but I, can I answer, can I answer that? I believe that when you're saying about the embers floating around, on the day of that fire in February the ninth, if, had it been myself, and I don't know if this did happen or not in the mine, but precautions would have been taken early in the morning. We used to always get a fire service, fire, sorry, a weather forecast the day before and I would have known that there was a bad day coming up on the ninth of February. I would have brought people in early in the morning to start spraying the open cut, especially with the wind direction, the way it's coming. Those batters would have been all wet down to mitigate the chances of a fire, a serious fire actually starting in those batters. So that's, that's the only thing I would say to that.
Yeah, well, and you'd be pleased to know, wouldn't you, that in fact, in these days, they have a documentary requirement on these sorts of occasions to do all of those things because of the high fire danger and they actually put it down in writing, which are fire preparedness plans that they put out and make sure that the wetting down's done.
Yes, I've heard, I've heard of that, I.
And the trucks are available and they're appropriately filled and positioned in the right places.
Yes, well, we used to do that.
And there's no maintenance going on down on the operating levels to avoid all those sort of risks?
Yeah, fire alert day, yes.
And so that they did, and all of those things were in place, so you'd be pleased to hear about that they had done all of those things? That's what you would have hoped for?
Yes, I would, yes.
And what's more, not only do they do them, but these days they write them all down so that there's no confusion about anybody's knowing their responsibilities, because there's a large number of things that need to be attended to on these high fire dangerous days, aren't there?
Yes, there is, but in the days when we had a fire alert, everybody knew their responsibilities under a fire alert system. We used to have training in it, trained all the time with fire training and that was all fairly documented. So I still believe that the system we had was still quite good, but.
Yeah, I'm sure it was, but you'd be pleased to hear that these days they at least carry on the same systems. But that unfortunately, and as you're aware, fire is a very prevalent risk in the coal mine, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
It's something they deal with really on almost a daily basis.
Well, we used to average, I think, about two hundred fires a year, that's screwed vehicles and a lot of mine fires and stuff also. Yes, they're a very, very big risk.
Yeah, and so, but you would accept, wouldn't you, that these, what occurred, what you've heard occurred on this day of the ninth of February was extraordinary circumstances?
Oh, yes.
Now, can I just ask you about your experience? You were keen to go on so you could see whether you could be of some assistance and so you offered yourself to go on. You say you had about twenty-five or thirty minutes down in the mine?
Yes.
And did you, did you actually take any notes while you went in there?
No, I didn't take any notes because I didn't know, I was only going to go in for a look around, so I just, just observations that I had on the day.
Yeah, okay, and those observations, to the extent you can recall them, are all in your statement, are they?
Yes.
There's nothing, nothing else you saw going wrong that you didn't put in the statement?
No, I didn't see nothing else, I didn't really get much of a chance to say too much.
Yeah, now, and was that the first time you'd been in the mine for some time?
Yes, it had.
How many years since you'd been in the mine?
Fourteen years.
As you say, it had changed a lot since the last time you'd seen it, very different looking. And it's, speaking as somebody who had a look for a first time not long ago, it's a massive cut, isn't it?
It had, it did, um, really.
Okay, so. There were large numbers of people, both CFA and mine workers there?
I didn't see a great deal of people, I seen, when I come into the staging area with Commissioner Lapsley, I seen a lot of CFA vehicles at the staging area and when we went down the cut, I only seen the two fire trucks on the five level and they were only, only went up to that level, so I don't know what was above. I'd only seen the two CFA trucks and I think one, one maintenance crew from the mine working on a hydrant, I guess.
Do I take it that in terms of the strategy that had been adopted by the CFA and the mine firefighters, you didn't have the opportunity to actually discuss with anybody what the strategy was that was being adopted?
No, I didn't.
And that wasn't something that you thought was appropriate to do at that time?
No, I didn't really, I did speak to Commissioner Lapsley, but didn't really get a lot of time to actually talk.
No, and you did mention one thing in your statement in paragraph forty-two about, something about not understanding the policy that they could inadvertently connect into the high-pressure mine?
Yeah, what had happened, it's probably a bit of a, needs explaining, but what happened was when there was a fire in the mine in two thousand and twelve, I think it was Suez's mine there, there was a dredger burned. I got a call from one of the engineers from the mine saying that, did I hear about the fire on eleven dredge that did serious damage? And I said, I did hear about it, how did that happen? And he said to me that the pumps failed. And I said, okay, but you should have still got water back from system three, which is a low quality water supply. And he said to me, well, I don't really think they knew about that. So, and then it was about three days later that I did get, spoke to a couple of fitters that worked in there and they said to me that the fire service is now depleted and the people that they've got there now, there's only, don't really know the complexities of the fire service system, so that's where I.
That's where your opinion, people talking to you about it?
Yeah, well, it's not just, it's, there's a fair few people talking about it, but what happened was then I was, I was a bit concerned that if they weren't sure of the fire service system, that maybe someone could connect in on the wrong side of a, the high-pressure side of the mine and maybe get themselves injured or maybe feel that was the.
That was the concern. You'd be pleased to hear that the evidence will be that in fact that risk doesn't exist in the mine. You can't connect in high-pressure levels, so you'd be pleased to hear that, wouldn't you?
I would be pleased, yes.
And then you also noted that the water pipes didn't seem to have a connector, a head and tail end to maintain the integrity of the ring water system. Could you explain that one to us?
Each conveyor has a head-end supply and a tail-end supply and it's very important that this water flows through, the system comes out the other side, the integrity of the hydraulic system of the water pipes. When I was driving around with the pilot, I didn't know, I didn't notice, well, it looked like there was a couple of tongue connections were missing. And there are times when they come out, but they should be put back in as soon as they can.
This was in the operating area itself?
Yeah.
Yes, and so, did you point those out at the time?
No, I did, I did mention, I think, to the pilot that could have a further look at the pipe work and he said, oh, we've got to go, so.
Who was the pilot?
Do I have to mention his name?
You do know his name, do you?
I do, Peter, I think his name was.
And, and did you, so you didn't seek an explanation as to whether there was maintenance being undertaken or something?
I mean, with tongue connections, there is a reason why they're out, it's sometimes the lead dredge travel through. It's not a rare thing, but all I'm saying is that they do need to go back in quickly to actually see if it compromised the hydraulic system of the mine.
Okay, tell me, you do also say that in forty-four you observed there were a lot of firefighters around. However, did not appear to be any coordination of the firefighting efforts, so why did you draw that conclusion?
Well, over the years we've had, we've had a lot to do with the CFA and we've always found that the CFA, the CFA tend to be very fixated on the fire units and there could be a reticulation system around, but they don't seem to hook up. They seem to always work off their fire tankers instead of using the pipe system that's there. And I thought that was, on the day I went in with the senior CFA guy, I thought that was the same thing, they had the pipe work there, but they were using the tankers and there just didn't seem to be any coordination or leadership at that point.
Okay, and what, this, a lot of firefighters around?
I saw a lot of firefighters at that time at the staging area and there could have been firefighters above eleven, but I didn't see them because I was down at a level below.
Did you inquire as to whether there was carbon dioxide questions with the firefighters and other health and safety questions and fatigue policies? Are they things that you had in your days or have they?
Well, I guess we did have them and I just didn't, just didn't recognise them, it didn't worry me or anything, but there was smoke around that day that I was in there with the senior CFA guy and the pilot, there was smoke around that day, actually. And that's one of the reasons why I think he wanted to get out, pilot wanted to leave.
Yeah, okay, tell me, on the question of the use of helicopters, when you were the fire officer, did they have helicopters available for firefighters?
Yes, I've used them before.
Have you?
Yes, we had a fire out at Stacker Dump, the old Stacker Dump, it's now rehabilitated, but we did have a fire out there on a couple of occasions, I think I used them twice. Because you couldn't get into that, because it was so rough, there was coal in the most of all and you couldn't get in with a vehicle, so I did chop it out.
And did you use them with long leads and the buckets like they do now?
I can't recall, it was a while ago.
You heard the evidence of the commissioner?
Yes.
I take it you defer to his opinion as to usefulness, wouldn't you? You do make one other suggestion that using your bulldozers to bulldoze clay into the fire, that was, the evidence is, will be that that was attempted in a few spots, but this, you understand, was six point one kilometres of fire that they were dealing with here, weren't they?
Yeah, well, what I was, I think the point I was trying to make there was that going back, what I was, the point I'm trying to make there is that dozers have got a place in, in open cut fires and I was going back to an incident at Chelorn when I got called over there, I think it was in seventy-seven or maybe early eighty, where there was a fire burning on a, probably a three or four hundred metre batter and we got called in to fight that fire and what I did when I got there, we had, we spread our people over the length of the batter and I got a dozer to come, because it was sending embers off the top of the batter, I got a dozer to come in on the top and to cut that, cut a metre or so of the face down to clean coal so that all the fire was dozed off and pushed into the bottom of the, where we were fighting the fire and then we could stop the embers blowing away and also we could fight the fire more easily.
A bit like they use the foam for now to cool it down to give you access?
Yeah, we actually washed it all down and it was actually very successful and that's probably where I got the idea that dozers have got a place in fire protection.
So you'd be pleased to hear that the evidence will be that in fact dozers work on a plate, but over six point one kilometres, it wasn't the only panacea for this fire?
No, I think my point is there that I'm trying to make was that dozers have got a place in, in open cut fires.
Thank you, Mr Brown.
Just one final matter, Mr Brown, earlier on I asked you about the fire service office, you recall giving evidence about that?
Yes.
And I'm looking at paragraph fifteen of your statement where you say that it had a good view of the mine and its operations. Was it a building that was elevated in some way other than being on the batters?
If I could just, just, if I could for a second, we've shifted our fire service offices about three times over the times I've been in the cut.
Yes.
And each time we positioned it to get a better view of the mine.
Yes.
So when this section, we might have it here, but when the section was cut out, we'd move it across the other side or we'd move it where we've got the best view.
And why was that? Why did you need a good view?
Well, the guy in the office on the telephone, he was basically a permanent spotter.
Yes.
He could keep his eye out, eye out all the time and it was just a spot where you could, you could take in the whole mine except the part below you. And how we used to cover that was at dinner times and times of bad visibility, we would have patrols out that would patrol the mine and make sure that nothing happened in the period that there was no one in the cut.
Is the point you're making that the office, the location of the office meant that it could be used as a lookout?
Yes.
To pick up fires when they started or sooner after they started?
That's part of, that's part of the positioning of the office, yes.
Yeah, thank you. So no further questions of Mr Brown?
Yes, thank you, Mr Brown, you're in chief.
We've reached the scheduled end of the day. I've spoken briefly with Mr Norris who is available to give evidence tomorrow morning to do a Phoenix simulation.
That's the best way of balancing it.
The order of proceedings for tomorrow, and this may change overnight, but the way things stand at the moment, after Mr Norris's evidence and the Phoenix simulation, is proposed to call Detective Inspector Michael Roberts of Victoria Police, then David Shanahan, Services Superintendent from GDF Suez, followed by James Major, I think you pronounce it, also from GDF Suez and they give first-hand accounts of the very earliest stages of the fires in the mine. The next witness it is proposed to call is Mr Harkins, Stephen Harkins, who is the Director, People, Culture and Environment at GDF Suez. There are then two employees of GDF Suez who have been asked to attend on summons and there will be some discussion overnight as to whether we call on that summons tomorrow or at a later stage. And the community witness tomorrow will be Graham Freshwater.
Okay, I join now until ten o'clock tomorrow morning.